I think it's gonna be just us mice tonight, but we'll go ahead seven o'clock, we'll head and call the meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance as usual.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this is the October regular meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission. And we just had Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Squartrito.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Lap.
Here.
Olver.
Here.
Shingles.
Here.
Thering.
Here.
Jason McDonald.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda, so you have tonight's agenda in your packet. There's a couple, sorry, there's three new business items and the usual items. Is there any, anything else that anyone's aware of that needs to be on tonight's agenda? Any issues with tonight's agenda? If not, we can have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bradshaw, second by Shingles to approve the agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so agenda was approved, so we're allowed to proceed with the meeting. Next item is approval of the minutes, so we last met on September sixteenth. That was our regular meeting for last month. Are there any corrections to the September sixteenth minutes? Aren't you gonna say it?
Oh, want me to say it?
I would.
Okay, for the roll call vote of the Sacred Heart Literary Site Plan, I'm not in the roll call vote or recognized.
Okay, so there was one correction, small correction, but one correction to the September sixteenth minutes. Are there any other corrections? If not, we can have a motion to approve the corrected September sixteenth minutes. Emote.
Seconded.
Okay, which was, was that Olver or so? So a motion by Olver, second by Lap to approve the corrected September sixteenth minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so minutes are approved. Next section of the meeting is Correspondence, Board Reports and Presentations. As usual, we start at the top with Commissioner Thering, updates from Board of Trustees.
Thank you, sir. Geez, it seems like it's been a year since I've done this, for whatever reason. Looking at my notes for the nine twenty-four meeting, what I have noted is we had our second reading and adoption of the proposed park ordinance update. I hope my information is accurate there. For the ten four meeting, we set the public hearing for the 2026 budget to be held tomorrow. And we had an approval of early voting, of the early voting agreement for election services between City of Mount Pleasant and Union Township. Details, if you want detailed details as to who's actually, you know, the pecking order of things. It's, it's on our, it's in our agenda packet for the twenty-second.
Is that meaning that the early voting will continue to be Union Township together with the City of Mount Pleasant?
Yes, correct.
Okay, will it continue to be at CMU?
Correct.
Okay. Any other, any questions for Commissioner Thering on trustees-related items? Okay, if not, I think we're good to go, thank you. Commissioner McDonald's not here, but I understand that the ZBA will be meeting in November because I saw they have at least two items that were published in the paper recently. I think one of them is directly as a result of us, but anything to say about that or?
That, that is correct. They will have a hearing first Wednesday in, in November. One of the items will be the Sacred Heart variance that, that you gave direction on. The other one is related to a project over on River Road that where the gentleman wants to expand a building that would require substantial variance for that additional, accessory building that they'd like to expand that requires substantial variance to, to be approved.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners on that? Okay, next item is Community and Economic Development Monthly Report. The report was at the end of the electronic version of your packet, but it was not included in the mailed out packet, but you have a copy of it on your desk here. Are there any questions from commissioners on any items in the monthly report? Okay, hearing none, we can move on, but if you do have any questions on those, feel free to direct them to Rodney and they can be, they can get answered. Any other reports or correspondence that anyone is aware of that needs to come before us? Okay, then we'll move on to the first public comment of the meeting. This is the public comment that is restricted to items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the planning commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, they're welcome to do so at this time. If you're in the room, come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes. If you're online, make your presence known and we'll make arrangements for you to speak. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. This public comment's open at seven oh seven.
I have a couple people, but neither are raising a hand.
There's actually people in the room?
There are two.
Okay, so we don't have live audience members tonight. Well, they're live too, but we don't have in-person audience members, but we have, we have persons in the in the electronic room. All right. Okay, so they haven't indicated that they wish to speak at this point, so we'll go ahead and close this public comment at seven oh eight. And we do have a, you know, an unrestricted public comment towards the end of the meeting. So we have three new business items. The first one is a discussion item, the, what's being labeled as the tiny home village correspondence, which includes a letter from the kind of leader of that project and then a bunch of supporting letters. So we'll let Rodney introduce this topic and then we'll have our discussion.
All right, well, thank you. As you, as we said, you have before you a collection of correspondence that's also been shared with Board of Trustees at, at the request of the folks that turned it in. This project, if you recall, is, is a proposal for, for supportive housing for the homes that, at least at this point, has been, has been proposed for, for land down Isabel Road, just north of Bluegrass Road, essentially behind the Hundreds Ale House Shopping Center to the north of that. This property that they, they have been looking at, it's, it was originally designed as an office park, a medical office park. Only one building was built, they did put roads in and some parking lots and such. It just never, never completed development and it's been sitting vacant essentially for quite a number of years. So for the one, the one building. The, as, I'm not aware that, that the land has been purchased by, by folks involved with Maslow's Village, but I understand that there is some interest there, whatever that may be, some correspondence back and forth in the current location. This, as I said, this is a project that involves tiny homes. The, it's something new for the township, the idea of having individual homes for, for folks that are coming out of homelessness, kind of creating a transitional situation where they can move from homelessness to into this transitional housing, have support on, on the site. That's the idea, as I understand it, and eventually move into a more permanent housing circumstance. It is, it is something that, that folks that are pursuing this indicate there's a need. Certainly there is a challenge with homelessness in the county. I've heard numbers around five hundred homeless folks in the county. Obviously, that's not an easy number to, 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 you know, to, to count. It's not a population that's easy to count, but it certainly sounds like a number that could be accurate. At this point, we, we have spent several years having conversations with Amanda Brake, the person that wrote the cover letter and has been kind of pursued, has been kind of, as you said, the leader of pursuing this. We've had several years of conversations with, with staff and, and Amanda Brake and a committee that she has, an ad hoc committee that she has working on this project. You have had one presentation from her, I believe it was earlier this year, where she gave you an update and talked in significant detail about the project. There was a prior presentation that was given to the board earlier on, but I think by, at the time, this is what, 2022 or 2023, I shared with you the video of that presentation. So this has been ongoing for some time. We've, we've had multiple meetings with, with Amanda Brake. I've met with her and her committee, she, they've met here, just so as we look with any potential developer looking at a project, answering questions and such about, about this item. One of the key answers that we've given is that this property is not zoned for, for the use. The property, their interest in is zone B five, which is a business district. And there is no zoning really, that, that where all of the things they would like to do, they all fit into one zoning district classification. So it's not as if we could rezonate multiple family or two-family or, or some other residential zoning because they, they do want to have supportive elements that, that require more of an office arrangement, counseling offices and, and other, other elements, maybe more of a business type zoning to, to support this. And then even within the, the project, they have talked about some things that would happen within the development that would not be consistent with any of our residential districts. So one of the things that we have shared pretty consistently all the way through the process is that we do have in our zoning ordinance, Plan New Development Regulation. PUD or Plan New Development is, is an optional way to develop property. It essentially combines rezoning of the land with a, a conceptual development plan. And what happens with PUD is that, that if, if, if that PUD, that Plan New Development is approved, and this requires both recommend, a hearing and a recommendation from this body and ultimately action from the Board of Trustees, because it is a rezoning. If it were to be approved, then that conceptual development plan becomes the zoning of the property. So all the details for what that zoning will be, the land uses that will be allowed, the, the layout of things, what, what, what pieces will be where, all the, all those activities, any future activities, anything they, they, they may have multiple phases, well, the, any future activities that they would like to have in phase two or phase three, those are all shown on that plan. And that then becomes the zoning of the property. And from there, they simply go through site plan approval for each phase of the development that they would like to pursue. We've told them that that is the process to follow. The Plan New Development Regulations and Ordinance are very flexible. They, they create opportunities for, for, for us to, to look at a, a project that is innovative, that is unique, that doesn't fit neatly into, into the zoning categories, but nonetheless may be a benefit both to the township and to the community and, and well, of course, to the development team. So it, it is, it is the vehicle to, to pursue this project. And, and the flexibility elements were built into it to, really, not necessarily this project amount, but projects like this in mind. And, and to, to give them a vehicle to move forward with. We have indicated to them that, that, that it's not that difficult to put a plan together that will meet the requirements for a Plan New Development. This is not a fully engineered site plan. This is truly a conceptual development plan, so we're not expecting all the engineering details to be worked out. They will need to survey the property, they will have to show things accurately, but this is a plan that can be put together relatively inexpensively. And it's our understanding that, that they've been working with civil engineers and surveyors and, and there may even have been. There's some of the letters talk about, if you read through the letters, some of them seem to speak to them that they've seen a plan. We have not, staff has not seen a plan, other than some earlier kind of, you know, I said napkin sketches, very early sketches and what you've seen with the presentations we've received. But that PUD is really the path for this, to pursue. They, as I said, they've not submitted an application, although again, if you read through these letters, it suggests they have because quite a number of the letters invite us to approve the rezoning application that they, that they, the brighter things they've submitted. They've never provided anything to the township to, for us to move forward with some kind of application review. The, the, the letter from, from Amanda Brake, it doesn't come right out and say, but it kind of alludes to a desire for the township to take a step to, to change the zoning. And I think at least one or two of the interior letters alludes to that idea of instead creating for us, asking for us to create a zoning district or a zoning classification that would allow this project to move forward by right, essentially a site plan approval. That is, that is an option and frankly, they, they also had that option. They, they, if they wish to amend our ordinance, there is an application for that. As we have seen, where we have the amendments related to solar energy, where, where folks that want, were interested in projects actually submitted a request and provided the, the initial text of amendment. So that is also an option for them. If they wish to try to amend our ordinance to put their project into the ordinance, they could pursue that. I, I don't recommend it. It's really, it is not necessary and I think it would actually be far more complex for them to accomplish than, than go through the Plan New Development process. But that is also an option. Essentially, that is where we are at the moment. We have a lot of, of time to answer questions, a lot of discussion. There, there certainly been information provided at every level. I will note, just kind of for the record, that Amanda Brake's letter several times suggests that, that staff has told her no or told her that, that that would not work or, or essentially given a definitive, don't do that answer. We don't actually do that. That's not our role as, as staff for, to, to say, don't do that. As Peter can attest and as any, any person that's kind of sat with us at development meeting can attest, we, we sometimes will say, that might be a, a big hill to climb. You might have some challenges to, to get there if you want to go that direction. This might be a smoother, easier path, but, but we do not tell people no at, at this level when we're talking about concepts. So when folks are kicking the tires, asking questions, we don't say, no, thou shalt not do that. Because that's not our role. Our role is to provide information, give direction as to what the ordinance options are, but it certainly is never to say, don't do that. The, it's that, we, we might tell them that it's a high hill to climb, but we're not, we're not going to simply say no because it is possible for somebody to climb that hill to find a path and figure out how to, to structure a proposal that actually might get approved, even if it is a big hill. So with that in mind, I just would open, offer this to you that to, you know, answering questions that may have about what you read, answering questions about where we are with this project. I'd hoped Amanda Brake might come tonight, I did invite her. That she may be one that's online, I didn't, I didn't see who was online, but so she may comment later. But anyway, I would basically open to you and, and give you that update and, and offer to answer any questions that may have about this.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple things that jumped out at me. My reading of this is that, is that one of her big concerns is that the, the requirements for building the structures, the, the tiny homes was going to be more expensive than what they could afford, in particular in relation to, you know, six-foot foundations versus building them on slabs. Where is that coming from? Is it true and how would they work around that?
Thank you. There is no requirement for a six-foot foundation. That, it does not exist. In Michigan, the, the typical depth for a foundation is forty-two inches. That gets you below, that's the frost depth of the, the recognized depth where you're below the frost level in, in which time. And that's the whole point of the foundation, is you get below frost depth so you do not get into issues with seasonal heaving, ups and downs that comes as, as, ground freezes and thaws and freezes and thaws. When the, the, the question of what, what these buildings would require really is nothing different than any other residence would require. These, these homes are proposed to have utilities, water, sewer, electric. One of the things that, that we did indicate early on to, to the folks, we were talking to Amanda Brake and the rest of the, the team, was that we, we would want to see individual bathrooms and kitchen sink kind of thing. We'd like to have those in the units, toilet sink kind of setup at the very, very least because this is, we, we're a four-season country. Winters are long and cold and one of the things they had been talking about was having communal bathrooms, where, where the unit, the housing unit would only essentially be a bedroom and that anybody that needed to go to the bathroom would walk across the way to the communal bathroom. And the answer to that from the township side and discussions was that it didn't make sense in our climate. And all the examples that they were showing where that worked were in Texas, in Arizona, you know, in, in much, much warmer climates than, than we're talking about here. And so what we, what we directed with regards to this was each unit should have, at the very least, its own toilet and sink so those facilities are available. In order to have utilities in that space, you, you can't have a circumstance where, where the, the water to sewer pipes are not moving, but the building is heaving up and down with changes in the, you know, the seasons. And, and if you've ever, if you've ever had a case where you have a, have a deck that you may have constructed with not on a foundation, just sort of floating and, and it's set up against your house, you'll find that that deck is, is different levels during the year. It can, it can be up and down a little bit because the, the house is not moving. The house is on a firm foundation, it's below the frost depth, but that deck adjusts essentially as, as ground heaves and, and subsides. So with these buildings, they need to be on a firm foundation in order to, so that the, the building and the pipe, the plumbing are all working together, aren't, aren't moving separately, which of course would simply damage the plumbing. So with that in mind, we, we did indicate that they, that they would need to get a foundation, but nobody requires a six-foot foundation. It's simply, I, I, maybe somewhere in Canada, I don't know, but the frost depth here is forty-two inches.
Okay, but you are saying that, because in a lot of parts of the country, houses are built on slabs, but you're saying if you did that here, it wouldn't be stable because of the freeze and thaw?
Well, all we're, all we're saying is that they essentially need to be treated the same as any other single-family home. So whatever the building code allows for foundations for single-family homes, we're simply saying that this is what they should do here.
Yeah.
They, they've, they've referred to this as temporary housing several times over the years, but this is really permanent development. And the idea for these units is that they will be there. It's not something where somebody put it there and two years later, it's going to be tossed out. And so these, these do need to be set properly on proper foundations and with proper utility support for them.
Okay. But those are, and just to clarify, I don't want to be the only person speaking here, but what you just said, what you just went through, is that, is that, is that the law? Or is that township staff as professionals exercising judgments to, to? Or is that township staff as professionals exercising judgments to, to tell people what's appropriate, what's not appropriate?
It's a great question. So I'm not a building official, I can't speak to the law of the state construction code. All that we've really said is that it must be followed, that these buildings do need to be on a foundation that's consistent with that code. Certainly, if it'd be helpful at some future meeting, I can arrange to have a building official here to answer those questions, but I'm not sure they're really necessary. Building code is an interesting creature. We currently operate under the 2015 Michigan Residential Building Code. Just recently, the state took the action to adopt, the next, well, essentially the X code, the 2021 code was what they had decided to adopt. And I believe it's that code that brings in some specific regulation related to tiny home construction. However, a lawsuit stopped that process. Home builders and some other groups do not like the 2021 code. It has some pretty challenging environmental requirements, very expensive requirements, that were actually replaced in the 2024 code. But these numbers, these are all the International Building Code. These are, this is, there's a model building code just called the International Construction Code. And it's put out, and then states and localities adopted or adopted changes. That's what, in Michigan, we all operate under the same code. So it's the state of Michigan that ultimately decides which building code we follow. And so right now, we're following Michigan's version of the 2015 International Code. The 2021 code was adopted and immediately set aside because of a lawsuit, so we're still under the 2015 code, which has no specific requirements for tiny homes, which means essentially they're governed by the same standards that apply to other single-family homes. That may change in the future, if we ever adopt a newer code. But if we do, then obviously they would have to follow those code requirements.
Open it up to everybody?
I suppose my question, my question would be, what would be the next steps for us then, for the planning commission? What can we do here? Is there anything for us to do here?
Yeah, excellent. Well, they, as I said, they've sort of alluded to, not really come out and ask, but alluded to the idea of asking the township to take the lead, to amend our ordinance, to allow their project. And I would say that that's somewhat challenging, because all we've seen are the presentations they've received. We've never really gotten a full picture of all the things they'd like to do, because frankly, like any development project in the early stages, it's changing, shifting. And so exactly what they might want is, that would need to be clarified. And what we might adopt, also, would that need to be discussed and reevaluated. I don't ever recommend, in my career, working with many communities, I don't, I've never recommended that we amend our ordinance for one property, one project. And that's really what is being asked for. So if we were to amend our ordinance, it would be to amend it to be, to allow more broadly tiny homes in various ways. We talked about some of those ways, whether it's tiny homes, how do we treat them on individual lot in a neighborhood? Do we allow them on smaller lots than the ordinance, the zoning district, or do they allow? All those kinds of questions. In addition to then looking at issues like this, housing for the homeless or supportive housing, senior housing, cottage housing, there's various names for these things, that we could address in the ordinance. But whatever we do, my recommendation is that we would take a comprehensive approach and look at all, the full scope of what the tiny home possibilities are, essentially what cottage homes, the possibilities are. I don't think that's going to be very helpful to them, because I would view that as a pretty long process. And frankly, as we're talking about our master plan update, it really probably should start with that. We'll talk a little bit later about the master plan update. As I shared with the chair, the material that I intended to have for you is not quite done yet, and the key item to that is actually a housing plan. And this was some of my reading material, and as I was looking at what we talked about, what the priorities were that we talked about, looked at some of this material, and looked at some of the issues that came out of the housing study that we've seen data on a while back. All that, all that's coming into that plan, it didn't quite make the cut to be able to get to you in time to have it on the agenda. But really, that I think is the first step, is whatever we would do, we would want to set a foundation in that plan, because it would be a pretty radical change from what we do right now in terms of housing, minimum housing size, and all those, minimum lot size, all those kinds of details. So that's a long process. It's not something that would take weeks or even a few months. I suspect that that's going to be a much more significant discussion if we pursue it. That's why the PUD is actually the appropriate vehicle, because see, one of the problems with us doing it is we do have to be comprehensive. We have to look at all the possibilities. In the end, I suspect that whatever ordinance we might adopt would actually be more restrictive than what might get approved as part of a PUD for this specific project. Because we have to look at all the possibilities, and what are all the angles, and figure out the right approach from all those various directions, comprehensively. But in a PUD, we're looking at, this is what they're proposing to do. And what do we see? This is our playground, this is our playing field that we're working in. It's narrower, it's more specific, and we're working with a specific development project. So we don't need to look at things they're not proposing to do. It becomes much simpler, relatively speaking, to look at a PUD application that it does to approach this from, the idea of a zoning amendment. So for you, in terms of what you could do, if you wished, you could ask to start the process to amend our ordinance, to allow for some of these things they're talking about. We certainly can pursue that, but I don't recommend it. I don't think it's a valuable use of time, and I don't think that, frankly, that the proponents of this project would like the results.
What was the nature of the discussion specifically about the PUD option? Is it resistance? Is it, is there, do you think there's concern about cost of the, you know, having someone develop it, you know, the plans, or what? I mean, because I agree, it seems like that would be a reasonable way to go with something like this.
Well, I can't speak for Amanda Brake, I don't know all those details. I wish, I said I wish she was here to speak to that. I suspect cost is a concern. This is, this is not a well-heeled developer, coming off of a hugely successful project and wanting to invest in another one. This is a group of advocates for the homeless and for low-income housing that have a desire, have a vision, are trying to put the resources together to accomplish that. What little I have heard about what they have done on the financial side, I'm very impressed with, they have secured some state money, some grant money. I don't know what else has been secured, but I have been impressed with the support that they have been putting together. Any development project requires a substantial investment, and my suspicious cost is a factor. One of the benefits with the PUD is they get, they get an answer relatively quickly and with a relatively low investment. That conceptual development plan is not an engineered, fully engineered site plan. They certainly would have to survey the property, and have accurate information about the roads and basic information about utilities and things like that, but basic, not exact engineered details. The layout is conceptual, so it's, there's a layout on the place, somebody would have to draw it up, which costs money to draw it up. But again, it's not a fully engineered site plan. It's not even a preliminary site plan, that's the ones you normally see at that stage. It's close to a preliminary site plan, but that does not have all the requirements of that, at that stage either. It's less information than preliminary site plan. Beyond the plan, usually the additional information is actually written material. It's information about what are the proposed uses, a list of all the proposed activities that will go down the property. There's a section of the PUD ordinance that is simply referred to as regulatory flexibility, and it's a section that allows limited deviations from zoning ordinance requirements. And what that basically means is if the, if the ordinance would require a setback of 50 feet, but they want to propose a setback of 20 feet, because that works better for their project, and they can show how that works better, that this is actually an improvement to go, to have this adjustment. They would simply propose that on the, on the plan. It would be a list of limited deviations. Here's what the ordinance requires, here's what we propose, here's why we're proposing it. And ultimately, you as a planning commission look at that, and the board of trustees look at that, and if you agree with that, that what they're doing actually creates a better overall project, it's a benefit to do that, then if you approve that PUD plan as part of a rezoning, that becomes a zoning. Now the setback's 20 feet. So that's another written material that would be on the plan, is that list of limited deviations. But the plan itself would be fairly simple. Even the timing is pretty short. It requires a planning commission public hearing. Obviously, that takes a little time, notifications, but not significant amount of time. And then it does require board of trustees' action. And for the board of trustees, that requires two meetings, a first reading and a second reading of the proposed rezoning change. But the board meets twice a month, so even there, that doesn't necessarily have to take a substantial amount of time. Within two, three months, they can have an answer related to, is their design, is their concept going to be approved or not? And the PUD, if it is approved, if that, if the property is rezoned to the PUD zoning district, and the conceptual development plan associated with it is approved, that's the zoning of the property, it does not expire. It continues with the property until it's replaced or removed. And so there's no question about, we have only so much time to do the development, they, at that point, then each of the steps from there are simply site plan review. And they can do that in phases. Phase one, we're going to do this little piece here. Phase two, we're going to do this piece. They simply come back with site plans for those pieces as they choose to move forward with it. They could also come with a site plan for the whole thing and build it in phases. It's up to them how they pursue that. But with a PUD, they actually get an answer pretty quickly, and that's what's been kind of frustrating, that they haven't ever applied for a plan of development approval, to be able to get answers to their concerns or questions about whether this would be approved or not.
They haven't applied to him for anything, correct? The PUD included.
So we need a PUD from them?
What's that?
So we need a PUD from them, then, is what I'm hearing?
That's what we need. That's the process, we've given that direction. I will tell you that, as I understand it, and I suppose, again, I'm speaking somewhat off turn for Amanda Brake, so if I'm incorrect about that, I will take the correction from her when it comes. But I understand that she may have gotten some counsel elsewhere that suggested that planning development was not a good option. And I suspect, and we've worked in multiple communities, that the reason why that counsel was given is that some communities, the planning and development regulations, planning development is something that was added to zoning back in the 60s, and it was, it was created by developers, because zoning in the 1960s had become very stratified. Thou shalt, little boxes and thou shalt. And developers said, "Look, we want to do this great project, if it's a big project, it's going to involve mixed use, commercial and residential, we want to build a town, we want to add a whole section to your town, we need something more than what you have in your ordinance." And so the idea with the planning development was a safety development, a way for an unusual or big project, an innovative project to be proposed, just as we've talked about. That didn't fit into the little boxes. Over time, some communities have reacted to bad experiences with that. Of course, that can happen. You have a developer that maybe doesn't do what they said they were going to do, and it becomes a big argument back and forth, or maybe the plan was not clear, and so interpretations get, create trouble. And so some communities have then added more and more and more little requirements into their PUD section. So it ceases to be flexible, but becomes almost a mini zoning ordinance with its own set of requirements, and a kind of a labyrinth of things, thou shalt within that, within that section. That often happens where developers have used the PUD process to get, to push through residential developments with higher density than otherwise would be allowed, to maybe mildly abuse the process to push through something that they couldn't get otherwise. And so the reaction to that is, "We'll just change the ordinance." In our case, none of that is there. We deliberately created as simple a process as we could, we kept it as flexible as we could. We wanted to invite and encourage innovative projects to come before you. We had the Prestige Center project, that was exactly that. It was a mix of a couple of different kinds of assisted living, member care, but then also originally had the independent senior living on it. The property was owned before, general business, and it was planned for business, so there was not a, not a really good mechanism for rezoning to something else. The combination of the juices over there didn't fit into one zoning classification, so the PUD was the appropriate way to go, and they pursued it. It's the same thing here, that this really, this is the best option. I think that maybe Amanda Brake may have gotten some bad advice about other people's more cumbersome regulations, that it's not part of ours.
Without some sort of site plan, there's really not a lot we can do to see, hey, maybe it fits, it still fits better under a PUD, or maybe it fits better in some other ordinance that, hey, this could make sense. Without you having that in your hands and allowing us to see it, then, I see.
Yeah, essentially, we need something to respond to. That's really where we are, is that we've heard a lot, we've had, we've had questions, we answered them, we've given some direction, and ultimately, at this point, we're simply looking for something to, an application that we can then respond to and start the conversation. Planning development, it's, there is a, you might think of it, some people talk about as a negotiation between the township and the developer. It's not really that, but as I said, there's flexibility built into it, where the developer can propose limited deviations, can propose late uses that don't fit in the zoning district, you know, can propose certain phasing or certain arrangements that might not fit in the tight boxes of the zoning district. But show how that's actually a better result than we would get otherwise, or how this particular project is needed in the community, fits a need, which is really what this one does, that is not otherwise met in the community. So that's exactly what the PUD is designed to do.
I'm just going to throw this out there, as not really knowing, you know, just as an amateur in this whole thing. But if I were, if I were in that position, it seems to me that, well, first of all, because there are such communities already in existence, that the plans for those communities exist, and so there are examples out there that shouldn't be that hard to find, and even if it's an expensive process to kind of assemble an application and draw it up, there also are, there are builders and engineers out there who have altruistic values, and there also are retired people that may be looking for something to do, that it seems like you would, you would kind of cast about and see whether, because couldn't, couldn't, couldn't any person that understands a blueprint probably make a pretty good stab at putting something together that would, that would be at the level you would need for a PUD application?
Yeah, I mean, our ordinance would allow certainly civil engineer, surveyor, landscape architect, architect, any of those professions have those skills and can put together a plan that can easily meet our basic standards. We have occasionally seen folks that have drawn plans. This is kind of, I think this is more complicated than that, but it can be done where somebody draws it out, scales it up, puts measurements on things, this is that puts measurements on things, this is what I want to do. And we can approve it. We see it more with the minor site plan level that Peter reviews administratively, where the plans are much simpler. The, yeah, the, there are certainly a variety of options. I understand that she does have some expertise working with her. I have no idea what their relationship is contractually, but, but I understand that she has a civil engineer and architect. You men, you mentioned other communities, tiny home communities. And she gave some examples in her presentations. The, at least earlier on in the discussion, the, the examples that she was giving were all from the southwest of the United States. All from a very different climate, Texas, so to say, Arizona, places like that. The, and we, we, discussion, we kind of called that one out. Said, you've got to, you've got to design this for our climate. Whatever you're doing has to be, has to work for this climate. And that may mean adjusting, because what, you can't pick up something from New Mexico or Arizona and drop it in, in the township and have it work the same. We actually had that experience. We have an apartment community right around the corner from the site they're proposing, where a, a, as I understand it, the, the apartment, the design of those apartments was, was originally a project in Southern California. And they picked it up and they did the same design here. Exterior stairs, exactly the same way. And a couple of years ago now, we had to actually condemn the staircases. Quite this number of them, because they had deteriorated. They did, they were not appropriately designed for our climate. And they had become unsafe. And so, I don't remember how many, there were six or eight staircases that we had to, they had to condemn. And therefore condemn, required the building to not be occupied. While, although those staircases were rebuilt, the owners did rebuild them beautifully. They rebuilt a bunch of other ones as well. But they, and that was not the only problem they had with that project. They had some problems with decks as well. The balconies and decks that, that were not designed for our climate. So that, that is an important factor, that we can't simply lift what worked in, you know, in the southwestern brake here. There are, as I understand it, there are a few tiny home communities that are at least aiming in the direction that, that this one would be. This one, as far as, my impression so far, and I may be mistaken, my impression so far is that this is going to be significantly bigger in scope than the tiny home communities that, that were referenced. Kalamazoo, I think, Grand Rapids, where I think were a couple that were in our state. There was one she referenced early on to me that was, that was in Whitmore Lake, Michigan, down near, north of Ann Arbor, that I actually knew that one and, and knew that it was actually a completely illegal project. Didn't really talk about that, but I knew that that one was actually not even, there was nothing legal about it. It just sort of accumulated there. And it was also a few homes, a few units. Nothing like what's proposed by, for this project. So, anyway, there are things that need to be worked out. Details that need to be worked out. And, and so, that's, that's what the PUD process is for, frankly. Show us what you'd like to do. We've talked through it, we walked through it. We really think about, is, is this something that would work? Is this really a benefit for our community? Is this, does it meet those eligibility criteria that are in the PUD regulations? And, and then if it does, can we move forward? And if there are adjustments that need to be made, then we can give direction. A little bit of that, you might say, negotiation, a little direction back, feedback, that results in a plan where it can move forward. So just as we do with any other development project.
So I, I, I do wish that, that she were available for us to just have, have a friendly chat with, because there, there are so many things that I have questions on that are not, like, particular pertaining to, like, the, the PUD itself. I mean, I agree with what's been said so far. But like, you, you bring up a good point about the fact that many of these communities exist in much warmer climates, and the things that she was specifically calling out as, as costing too much money to, to, for, for them to afford these solutions that they need, having the individual bathrooms, having plumbing, heating, having, you know, the, the foundations, just adds the cost of these individual buildings. And it seems almost like, well, if, if they've been at this for three years, I, I feel like there's maybe some, just, not, there's, there's not, I don't know how to say it exactly, but I don't want to say poor planning, but not, I mean, you know, the fact that these, these are, these communities primarily happen in the, like, the southwest. And all these things seem to be solvable by a more, like, a single, multi-family home approach, like apartment buildings and stuff like that. And I know that that's not what they're about. Like, they're literally a tiny home village nonprofit, so, just, I wish we had a chance to discuss with her, like, what the issues are and, like, how, how we can help her make this work, but also, yeah, for our climate, because that seems to be a big, big issue, that, that sounds like it's, it's causing lots of problems for, you know, both her and us.
Did you verify whether she's?
She's not raising her hand, but she is on mine.
She is? Okay.
She's not raising her hand.
Okay, well, you, you never know whether the, what, what do we use? What, what platform do we use for that?
It's Zoom.
It's Zoom? Okay. Finding, finding the raise hand button isn't always intuitive on these, some of these platforms.
We still provide these instructions for that, if they're repackaged.
Yeah, yeah.
I've never used this, but.
Okay.
Should she make a chat comment or anything?
You know, you mentioned the multiple family housing. This is something I, I learned from, from her, from Amanda Brake and her, her team, as part of this, that really kind of intriguing, and it deals with human nature. The discussion, I asked the same question. Why, why can't we just have an apartment building? We have, we have one apartment community that is aimed at being, being the transitional housing, folks that are coming out of homelessness and independent housing. So we, there is one of those in town. Why couldn't we have one that, that's bringing, be the starting point for that process? But be apartments or studio apartments, something like that. And it, and what I was told was that it has to do with the human nature folks in that circumstance, that, that to be in an apartment building is to be closed in. It's to be, and I may, I may tell this poorly, so she can certainly tell better next time that, that she's here. But essentially, there, there is a feeling of, almost claustrophobia, I'd say. That feeling of being tied down and closed. You know, I can't get up, I'm certain that, so it can happen when you're in an apartment building. Come in the hallway, you have multiple doors, you have all these people. And you might have a unit, but it gets back in the space, back in the building somewhere. The tiny home truly is a transitional element. They're out, they're living outside essentially now. And so it's taking one step inside. But it's a small step. They can easily step out. It's a small space. It's theirs. It's nobody else's. And, and so, it's, it truly, it creates a transition that helps to create a mental and emotional transition. And that's actually something I, I have had some, some personal experience with, with, I've had family members who've owned this.
I mean, I, I-
Had that very problem.
I absolutely agree with everything that you said, and I think that it's laudable. And, and in, in a place that has the climate that would allow for that, I, I think it's an amazing opportunity to have that, yeah, that feeling of, of ownership of a single-family home with, with the, the cost reduction of having it, you know, be tiny. I just, like, I just, I wonder if that's feasible with Michigan climate being what it is.
The city of Kalamazoo, just recently, I just read, sorry, not too long ago, they, they went all out for what's called microhousing. The very smallest of the tiny homes. They were talking a hundred, a hundred and fifty square feet, the kind of size. And they had, apparently had a bunch of them built. Maybe even smaller than a hundred square feet. Their numbers were very small. And the, the idea was kind of what, what the Maslow's Village concept was in terms of creating a space where, where the homeless could, could start, you know, and these, these would be dropped in a parking lot, wherever they're dropped. Very simple. They're out on a foundation. Come and live, they would have communal showers, whatever. But it was very, very simple, simply inside space to stay. And they, they built a number of these. The number, sticks in my head is fifty, but don't quote me on that. Of course, I'm taped, so. But anyway, they built a number of these things. And, and they tried them out. And the article was talking about the fact they were auctioning them off, because they found that they were not functional in the wintertime. They truly were only functional for seasonal use. And so they, they, they were not suitable for what they needed in Kalamazoo, which, climate there, a little further south than we are, but not much, it's a warmer climate. Perhaps even a little bit more snow than we get. But anyway, they were not suitable for year-round use. And so, I don't know who's going to buy them, but they were auctioning them off to find them a new home. That's the challenge that we have, is really to deal with that. Kalamazoo tried, very innovative, they're doing some very innovative things there. This one didn't work.
Yeah. Let me break back in. Is she in con-
She is raising her hand.
Okay, well, let's let her speak.
Well, um-
If we can.
Can you turn up the volume?
Yeah, can you turn up the volume as much as possible? Both, both of you? Her on her end and you on your end? Just barely.
Is that, is that here?
Is it here?
Is there a volume thing in the other room?
We're not able to make any comments in the chat. Can you hear me now?
Little bit better.
Yeah.
I'm as close to the computer as I can get. Um, so I did not prepare a presentation, and I apologize that I misunderstood. I thought this was a virtual meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, we're always in person. We just allow people to attend virtually. But we can, we can hear you, so if you'd like to talk to us, you're welcome to do so.
Sure, wonderful, thank you so much. So our work going behind sending letters of support was mostly because October 10th was Worldwide Homeless Awareness Day. And we just wanted to make sure that the township knew that we do have great deal of support. So as we move forward in, in creating a zoning that will work for both the tiny homes and the township, I know that sometimes we want to make sure that all the community members are in favor of projects like this. So we wanted to make sure that you saw that support. I would like to make a correction on the Kalamazoo tiny home village, if I may. So what they bought were pots. They were preassembled microhomes that simply consisted of one to two beds. There was no plumbing. Some electrical for things like heating. Those pots were never established in a village due to the fact that the PUD that they had wouldn't align with any of the open properties in Kalamazoo. So they never actually actively functioned as a village. And because they were unable to sign properties, they then had to auction those pots and have decided to move toward a congregate shelter.
Well, so what do you think about having listened to our discussion? I'm assuming you were able to listen to it. Do you have any different feelings about the PUD route here now compared to before?
I definitely appreciate the conversation. I think our group mostly wanted to hear from the board what direction would work best for our township out of respect for all of the hard work that y'all have already been doing in our area. I would say that my perception of how to move forward was not quite as open and accessible as what had been discussed this evening. We have been working with civil engineers. We've worked with folks in different zoning districts. I would also like to point out that one of our favorite examples of a tiny home village actually is in Seattle, Washington, which I'm sure you're aware the climate can get quite chilly there as well. So the examples that we've provided have not simply been southern states examples. There are some that have been established and primarily based on their programming, which has been wonderful programming, and has honestly changed the trajectory of their homeless population. The examples of how to build have come from, for example, Washington, the Low Income Housing Institute Coalition. They have several different sites. I believe it was eight at my last count. We are not looking to build full single-family homes, and we have run up against a few difficult conversations in that while the structure obviously needs to be secure and our number one priority is making sure that we're providing safe, decent transitional housing, we also want to make sure that we're being very clear both with, also with our participants in not creating something that would be the desire to be in long-term, because it is supposed to be transitional housing, very much a caveat to a homeless shelter with minimal needs being met and services being provided.
So is, do I conjecture that, that part of the issue there would be, you, you think that having, even in Michigan, having communal bathing would be a reasonable way to go compared to putting full plumbing in each unit?
I would say yes, because the facilities that we're talking about as far as the bathroom within the microhome would consist of a multi-use toilet and a sink. Communal showers give us the ability to maintain a better level of sanitation. Sometimes the folks that we're servicing may not have all the capabilities to be able to clean a full bathroom, for example. I, I would also state that for a majority of these villages, communal shower houses are a common thread.
I, I just like to add, like, I definitely see the value in all that, and I totally agree with all of that. And everything you're saying are making, is making sense. My, my biggest concern, just as a resident of Michigan and being keenly aware of, of what Rodney had discussed with things like the, the frost level, the long-term health of the actual units as they go through the different seasons. And then, like, that's my primary concern. And, and my secondary concern is, like, especially in the winter, being, you know, having to go outside to, to access things might not be good for certain types of homeless people, especially people who are disabled, either physically or mentally. And they could, I just, I have a lot of concerns with, with something like that where communal things are not available that are winterized. And, and that's, I mean, you know, if we can find a way to find a common ground with that, I'm totally all for it. I think these, these tiny homes that we've seen, the presentations that you've given previously are wonderful and are amazing. I just, I want to make sure that they're properly winterized, essentially. Like, that's, that's been my biggest concern since learning about this. And then, just, just a minor add. I have family who is from Seattle, Washington. And to my knowledge, that whole area is one of the only tropical rainforests in the United States. And while they do kind of get brisk- And while they do kind of get brisk mornings in the winters, it's fairly, it's a fairly stable climate year-round.
I certainly appreciate that feedback. I have talked to their engineers and construction, and they've told us that they've got into some freezing temperatures consistently. So I will definitely be back checking that, and I appreciate that point.
Other comments or questions from other commissioners? Either of the, of her or of Rodney?
Just a kind of an observation, and it's probably just a kind of a sidebar. I don't know if this is something that should be taken up with the trustees, but the word homeless has negative connotation to it. Homelessness is a condition, it's not an identity. So when we say that people, when we call people homeless, it creates stereotypes. Obviously, it can be dehumanizing. So I think, you know, as a public entity, we need to take that sensitivity into, you know, into account. Obviously, using terms like unhoused is probably a more appropriate term today. There are others as well. But it's just something, especially as we start documenting things. This is, I read through this document, I think it's referenced in here. The word homeless is only referenced a couple of times in here. One being the Worldwide Homelessness Day Letter is in the title of it. So it's just something, it was just an observation. I think we have an opportunity. And it's just, obviously, in making sure that we're sensitive to, you know, the citizenship and what their condition is. Because obviously, I think for the first time, I was driving last week, and I was coming through the new little square on Main Street, and I saw a person at six-thirty in the morning sleeping on a bench. I had never seen that before in my thirty-six years in Mount Pleasant. So projects like this support that not happening. It's probably happening, just my experience. So just something to think about as we move forward.
I agree. I think that the board is supportive, certainly, of this kind of project. It's just trying to figure out how to make it work in a cost-effective way for the organization sponsoring it, but still meet the requirements we see in terms of the weather here. Especially heading into the colder months now, all of us are realizing today, right? The temperature is shifting. And, you know, when you're in your own home and the heat's on, this is not an issue. But, you know, what is good enough for someone who's unhoused so that they are transitioning into housing, more permanent housing, but aren't so attracted to the unit that they don't want to leave it? And I think that is a real tricky, tricky kind of conversation to have about what's sort of good enough to get you through, but not good enough to make you want to stay. And I'm having trouble with that. With, I understand that's an issue, but I'm having trouble with that because it feels like we're downplaying the quality of the housing that you want to provide because you don't want it to be too attractive. And that's a problem for the township, because we have to think about the fact that this is housing that's going to be approved within our community. So what does it need to look like? So it's really challenging, but I think that I, I think I'm sensing from other people on the commission that people are very supportive of this. It's just trying to figure out how to get to the actual plan.
Yeah, I have to say, I've, I mean, based on the discussion, whether you choose to, you know, take the suggestion and go with a PUD or whether you don't, that at some point, putting something on paper that people can look at and see, well, what would this look like? Where would, if that land is able to be obtained, where would the, where would the individual units go? Where would the, you know, where would the office go? Where would the collective, you know, bathing facilities? If that's what you want to propose, where would that go? Because, you know, even a rezoning, you'd have to know what you're looking at and try to decide whether there's a zoning that currently exists that would meet that or whether there needs to be a new type of zoning or whether this is a perfect example of a PUD, so let's do that. Do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And I would just like to state that we have not proposed anything because it has not seemed accessible. I guess would be choosing my words correctly. There have been conversation, a lot of conversation, and it has so frequently that the vision for micro housing and not long-term housing. Our goal is definitely not to provide anything that is unattractive or that lacks any sort of decency or respect for the folks that we're serving. And if that has been in any way my presentation, I do apologize. That is certainly not where we're coming from. It has felt oftentimes not accessible in conversation to present something like a micro home with minimal facilities. So we've been trying to navigate what would be considered acceptable. And tiny homes and their building codes are not universally regulated, so it's kind of a tightrope in trying to find what the township would find as a best solution and a best build. We do have conceptual site drawings that have been discussed and in fact are in the presentation that are given both to the trustees and to the planning board. And if there is a jumping off point, which I feel grateful that the conversation you've had tonight does give access to, okay, let's have this conversation. Let's go ahead and do the presentation of what could look like and submit our proposal for a PUD. And to know that that can be an open conversation, not, and I'll be all, nope, we're not going to do it, I think has been the biggest concern in, as to why we've not presented an actual proposal at this time.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think I'm speaking for all the commissioners. I think we would, I think we would welcome a proposal. I don't think, I don't think we're prepared to say that it would automatically be approved. But I mean, anything that comes before us, we look at carefully and seriously. And the majority of things over the years that have come to us have been approved ultimately. But I just think that there's a big difference between hearing a description of what someone would like to do and seeing the plan. When you see the plan, that's when it begins to look like, you know, you can, you can think about, well, how would this work? How would traffic flow work? How would, how would, where would people walk? Where would they be going? All this sort of thing. How would this fit into that particular area? I mean, we all can create mental images of that, but we may be way off from what you're thinking. So it's helpful to be able to see that.
It might be helpful, too, if you have sort of several different levels of housing options, to have those as well. So that could also be something to consider, like the tiny home versus the one on, with an act. I mean, I know there are different models and they come with different facilities built in, so. I've just, I've stayed in a vacation in an unheated cottage in northern Michigan during the winter on a ski vacation where we had to keep the fireplace going. And it's simply not safe to put people in housing and forcing them to go outside to use the restroom and things like that. I mean, it just feels like you really need to consider the weather here because it is so unpredictable, especially during the winter.
That's because they're not Finnish and it's not eighteen-eighty. If it was, it'd be perfectly fine. But we live in a different time.
So are we looking for a recommendation from the planning commission, something formal? Or is this?
There's no action tonight. It was, this was truly simply a discussion.
Okay, great.
And thank you for allowing me to take part, I appreciate you having me.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for being, really, our first, well, we've had a couple, I think, guests before, but we haven't done it too many times, so I'm glad it was, worked and we were able to hear you just fine. Do you, and we do have another agenda item to tackle, but do you feel like you've gotten enough from us tonight?
I think so. Thank you very much.
Okay, super. All right. So if there's no final comments from commissioners on this topic, we're ready to move on to our next topic. Okay. So, item B under new business is the text, zoning ordinance text amendment for the topic of firearms dealers. And so, again, Rodney will remind us of how we came to be at this point, say what he wants to say about the proposal, and then we'll discuss it.
Well, thank you. You've seen some of this before. We had a conversation a couple of months ago about this topic. The ordinance allows gunsmiths, that's the term, in several districts. It does allow it as a special use in ag and residential districts. The intent, I believe, was basically to treat it like any other home occupation. Our home occupation section allows, it has a list of allowable home occupations that simply can be there as long as they follow the rules in that section. And then it allows, basically, anything that doesn't fit in this list can be approved as home occupation, but requires a special use permit from the planning. So gunsmith, I think, fits in currently in that same environment. That if they want to operate out of their home, they have to get special use permits. As we talked about previously, the challenge is that that requires public notices. We send notices out to everybody within three hundred feet. We put a notice in the newspaper as well as on our website. And so we're basically advertising to anybody that's paying attention that there are likely going to be firearms available in this person's home. And creating potentially unsafe circumstance for that person. Certainly making them more of a target than in the language. So the discussion was, the idea was perhaps to look at, could we allow a firearms dealer? And that's, that's the more accurate term now, rather than gunsmith. Could allow a firearms dealer, at least in certain circumstances, to be a home occupation without the need for a special use permit, without the need for a public hearing? And so that's what this is proposing to do. In your packet, our report, dated October the sixth, we listed the eleven different types of firearms, federal firearms licenses that are allowed. We're not proposing that all of these be allowed as a home occupation. Things like manufacturing ammunition, manufacturing destructive devices, explosives, those sorts of things that are not appropriate, certainly, in a home occupation. So what the ordinance does is it, number one, defines firearms dealer in a narrow sense. It bases it on the federal definitions, but it's reduced down, doesn't incorporate all of what these eleven categories represent, but a narrower scope for firearms dealer. And then it also, it proposes to allow it in, as a home occupation, so adding it to the list of allowable home occupations without a hearing. And then adds under prohibited uses, adds in the activities that are more challenging, more intensive. And basically says these things can't happen as part of a home occupation. So again, manufacturer, importer of destructive devices, pawnbroker, manufacturer of ammunition, outdoor sales and demonstrations, all those things would be prohibited as part of a home occupation. They would potentially be allowed in the commercial districts where firearms dealer, right now, gunsmith is allowed as something by right. It proposes we change the name there to firearms dealer. So that broader, those broader activities could potentially be in a commercial district under the licensing process, but would not be allowed under a narrower scope for a home occupation. So that in mind, I just want to bring this to you. You've seen it before, we did make some tweaks to it from the initial concept that I shared a couple of months ago. And so just want to make sure you were still comfortable with it before we set it for a public hearing in the future.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so I read this through a number of times to make sure I was understanding everything. Oh, shoot, and I just turned that page. The definitions, it mentions in section, well, there's two things. There's home occupation and then there's home, there it is, home-based limited business. And in the definitions, the only difference I can see is that the home occupation, it has to be only people that live in the home. And the home-based limited business, you could employ someone who does not live in the home.
Right, and I believe there might be a couple of other expansion, a little bit, a little bit more leeway given to the home-based limited business. I think maybe the size is allowed, and you have a little bit more area that you can operate out of.
Yeah.
But the big one certainly is, yes.
But in section six nineteen, it says, and maybe I'm looking at an older version, but I don't think so. The home-based limited business still goes through the special use permit process, whereas the home occupation does not.
That's correct.
And so this, the gun, the firearm dealer would have to fall under the home occupation?
That's correct.
Okay.
If they want to have employees, they're going to be coming to you for special use permits.
Okay. And then on page thirty-nine of your packet, where, section three point four, where we're striking the S's for ag, R1, R2A, R2B, R, yeah, those four. They're being replaced with nothing, right? It's an open box, which means it's not ordinarily permitted, but if it qualifies as a home occupation, then it could be.
Exactly.
All right? And then lastly, I like which, the definition, is that like a federal thing? Is that, did you get that from some legal?
Yeah, the definitions are based on the federal definitions.
Yeah, yeah.
As I said, I tweaked them to tighten it up a bit from the broader language of the federal, which covers all eleven license types. But it's based on those federal definitions.
Okay. And the way you finally handle it in six nineteen, I thought was pretty elegant. Do I, if I sum this up as guns but not bombs? Is that basically the idea?
Yes.
All right.
We should put that in an open, a hearing notice.
Yeah, okay. All right. Questions, other questions from folks?
For home occupation, the things that are allowed, do you occasionally visit these locations to make sure they're compliant?
You know, it's interesting, we used to require a permit. First of all, we used to require planning permission for a, as a home occupation permit. Under the former ordinance, that was the step that had to come in. We do not require a formal permit, we can, we, there's a provision for a home occupation permit as a zoning permit. So the fee structure, I think the fee is zero for that. But anyway, if somebody needs a, have a documentation of a local approval, we just have, ask for the zoning permit for your home occupation. Peter reviews it, and he confirms, yes, it complies or that it doesn't. But the idea with the home occupations is actually, we want to make it as easy as possible to have one, as long as they follow the rules. Because home occupation is the best way to start a business. I mean, it's the least expensive way to get going. And there are many businesses that can operate out of a home with no impact on anybody for many years. In my consulting world, I worked out of a home office for many years. And there are others that do that, even folks who do hairdressing or taxes or attorneys. There's lots of things that can be done out of the home. there's lots of things that can be done out of the home. And so we want people, we even encourage people to be able to start a business and grow it over time, because we hope that eventually it grows to the point where it grows out of their house. It becomes too big. And usually, it will become too big for them long before it becomes too big for us, long before it hits our maximum numbers, percentage of the home or anything like that. It will become aggravating because it's taken over the living room and the kitchen and the dining room, and you know, and you need to move out. So that's the idea, is that you're so successful that you can move out into an office space or into a warehouse space or whatever it is. But the goal really is to make it as frictionless as possible to be able to start a business in your home, so following basic rules that ensure that what you're doing is not going to harm the neighbors.
On page 39 in the amendments to section 3.4, as Philip also noted, that we're striking out the special use permits for the AG through the R2B. Do you foresee any impact to current businesses striking these out?
No, no, because if they're in that zoning district, first of all, we don't know about them, they're probably not legal right now because they don't have a special use permit. But I would say this, that these are federally regulated activities, likely there aren't any.
Okay.
Because they are, the federal government requires them to get local zoning approval before they can get their federal license. And so they have a need to come and talk to us. There are a few activities that are like that, and this is one that's really probably strictest in that score. So if there is one that's operating right now that doesn't have any local approval, then frankly, making this change would potentially make them legal. Because if they're operating on their home, they're home occupations, and they follow the rules, and they're fine.
But currently, we don't have any special use permits assigned, is what you're saying?
I'm not aware of it.
I thought we did one.
Have we done a special use for a gunsmith?
I think it was before Rodney maybe was here, but I thought we did one.
But anyway, essentially, they would, there's two things that would happen. Number one, they would fall under the new rules. If they comply with them, wonderful, they'll just follow them. If they did have an approval like that, where there was some approval granted to them and the ordinance has changed, then they're also protected by the legal nonconforming status that they don't have, that they'd be allowed to continue, they were legal when they started, even if the ordinance changed, they're allowed to remain there as long as they continue to operate in the same fashion.
Okay.
But to follow up on James's point, the home occupation has to receive a permit, right, a zoning permit?
Well, as we operate now, first of all, in many cases, people are simply operating a business and nobody knows, their wife, or children, or family member. What we have basically said is that if you need a local zoning approval for your business, come and get a permit for it.
Oh.
We can do that. But we do not go out hunting down people
Yeah.
... to find out whether they have a home occupation permit or not.
Okay.
We've simply made it available to help people that want to have that confirmation that they're complies. And as I said, there's some cases like this one, where formally, the federal government will require that local zoning.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, we'll just do a zoning permit, they apply for it, if I recall correctly, I think there's no charge for that permit.
Yeah.
And granted, they're on the way.
Okay, okay. But, you know, and I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but realistically, if someone goes through this process, there's not going to be anybody that would know right away, certainly, if they were kind of branching out into some of the more destructive products relative to your typical hunting rifles and things of that nature.
Well, I will say this, that neighbors are wonderful people, and they often give us a call to let us know about their neighbors doing something, it might be a barking dog, it might be somebody else. I mean, often these issues are complaint generated, and if somebody's branching out, if they are, if a whole ton of customers are coming, if they're out on the front porch selling guns, you know, what it might look like. You know, if they put a bunch of signs up, 20% off today, you know, trying to run a pawnbroker operation, all these various things. If they're doing things that are not in keeping with the quiet enjoyment of the residential neighborhood, which is essentially what our section 6.19 says, it says it longer in these specific things, but it really says, keep it residential in character. If they're not doing that, we're going to get a call. And that call will then generate, follow up with them, and it will help them be successful in getting things back in the line where they need to be.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Making that type of visit to this type of business is a little bit different from, you know, the cookie bakery or the, you know, crafts or whatever, so.
Now, the first, the first, the first notice might be a door hanger, it might not even, or it might be a letter. It might be a knock, it just depends on the circumstances.
Yeah.
What I've, the direction I have always given Peter and our other enforcement personnel in our office is trust your instincts, trust that little voice in the back of your head. If it doesn't feel right, don't go. If there's anything that doesn't feel right, just walk away.
Yeah.
We can always come at a different way if we need to call the state police or the county sheriff and have them come with us, we can do that. But in this case, I suspect you're probably right, that because of the activity, if we know what the activity is, that we might, first thing might be a letter. If you have a problem, here's what it is, give us a call.
Yeah. So basically, our job tonight is to look at this and decide whether it's ready to go forward to a public hearing.
Correct.
Okay? So thoughts from commissioners, any other questions?
Is there anything that would make it more ready for a public hearing?
It's really if you're comfortable with the change, and feel comfortable that it's ready to be seen by the public.
I move to schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting on November 18th, 2025, to receive public comments on the proposed firearms dealer amendments to sections 2, 3, and 6 of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
So the motion was made by Lapp, it was seconded by Bradshaw to schedule the public hearing for November 18th. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Olver.
Support.
Lapp.
Yes.
Jingle.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Rodrigo.
Yes.
Thering.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
All yes.
No, it was six yeses and one support.
In my experience, whoever says the word first is supposed to be repeated throughout. And you all just went in a different direction.
You'll get over it.
She won't start with me next time.
Sorry, couldn't read this.
Okay, thank you.
You can.
So we have one more business item tonight, and that is the adoption of the 2026 schedule.
So moved. Or we could talk about it for a while.
Well, yeah, we can have the motion now and then talk about it. I would just point out that I did get out my 2026 calendar, and I checked the planning commission dates, and they are all correct. I did not check all the other dates, but I checked our dates, and they're accurate.
Good enough for me.
And it continues to be the third Tuesday of the month. The joint meeting is the, what would that be, the third Wednesday in April, I guess, but April 15th. And that's it for us. So do I have a motion to approve the, our schedule for next year?
You do.
Motion by Olver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thering to approve our 2026 meeting schedule. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 It was loud and enthusiastic. We already had a brief discussion. Is there anything, since it's on the agenda, is there anything you want to say about the master plan update?
It just, I apologize that it didn't get out. It said, I have two sections that are very close to being done, the third one is a little bit behind it. I will share them with you via email, so you'll have plenty of time to take a look. And then, of course, they'll be in the packet for next month, but when they're complete, I will distribute them via email, so you have them early.
Is that, is that a draft of the complete change?
So, no, I'm working section by section. So what I have right now is housing, it's a topic already, but the plan for housing, the plan for agriculture and rural area, that's a separate section. And then I do owe you an updated version of that economic development plan, the industrial areas plan. So those are the three that are close, and then there's a fourth one that, the commercial areas, I think was the fourth one, that's not as close, but, so you're going to get at least two of them fairly quickly, a third one probably sooner after that.
Okay.
So you'll get them in pieces, but it's basically section by section, and these are kind of the core sections of the plan anyway. And the idea is we'll take a look at them and then bring them all together from there into a full document.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Just back to the, comments back to the city on their master plan, did you ever get any comments back on that south entrance off of 27?
The, you're talking about the new, making the full interchange?
Yeah, expanding that to a full interchange?
Yeah, the city is very supportive of that.
Okay.
Definitely, that is definitely been made part of their plan. They corrected the confusion, it was not clear, but now it is clear that they are definitely supportive of that element.
Okay, thank you.
The, I thought you were going to talk about the roundabout, and I did not get any feedback on the roundabout, other than I don't believe they made any changes to that section.
Yeah. They were doing some, something in front of Red Lobster, which made me wonder if that's anything related to that.
Actually, that was ours. That was our sidewalk front.
Oh, all right.
We completed that stretch of sidewalk in front of Red Lobster, and also there was another section on the other, on the east end of the Indian Hill Shopping Mall there. And so we now have the sidewalk complete all the way across the shopping center to the vacant lot that is proposed to be Leo's Corner Island and the Big Chicken Restaurant.
Yeah.
And that project is this close to submitting a final site plan, they're so close. And so we're certainly hoping to see that very shortly. That will complete the last piece, once that's developed, to take the sidewalk all the way through past Menards along that south side of Bluegrass.
Yeah. But isn't it true that if that roundabout were to be built, that where the sidewalks meet Mission would have to be totally redone as well?
It would completely mess up that whole process, which was one of the comments we made, that because that corner there, the southeast corner, is really difficult to fix with the roundabout there because of the topography. They would be doing a whole lot of digging and some very big retaining walls to be able to put a sidewalk into that space if they had to push it backward.
Okay. All right, so we'll look forward to that next month. Just a couple more things here. We have extended public comment. If anybody would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, you're welcome to do so at this time. Once again, give us your name and address for the minutes, and limit your comments to five minutes on any issue. If you're online, raise your hand. Extended public comments open at 8:39. Is anybody left in our room?
No.
Okay, so we have no one in the audience, we have no one online, so go ahead and close that back up, also at 8:39 until next month. Final board comment, any comments from board members? Okay, I get the sense that people are ready to head out and get on with their evenings, so we've completed our agenda. We'll stand adjourned until our November meeting.